Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, April 7th, 2021. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. We thank Executive Director Jen Ramsey and her fabulous team of Tim and Ryan for their great work and commitment to public engagement. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic under an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020, over a year ago. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. Also, for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting, unless you are participating in public speak. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Erica Flood.
Here.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Here.
Owen Zerrit.
Present.
All right, we'll now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
To the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Justice.
For all.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion to approve the minutes of March 17th?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes of March 17th. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes have been approved. We now have public speak, and for those who would like to participate in public speak on any topic other than what is in the public hearings, please remember that the city council will not be commenting, and we cannot respond, but we will be listening. We ask that you remain respectful and direct your comments only to the city council. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand under the reactions option. Please remain on mute and keep your camera turned off until called. Before commenting, please state your name for the record and your address or precinct. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. We do have a public hearing at 6:15 tonight, so if public hearing, public speak runs long, we will resume once the public hearing has concluded. All right. Does anyone have, I know that it looks like there's two people, three people, so we'll start public speak with Gabby.
Hi, my name is Gabby Stevenson, and I live in Precinct 2. I'm here today to voice my support for Councilor Gomez's resolution supporting the self-determination for Puerto Rico. This bill on the national level already has support from many of our representatives and is something I believe that our city government should also support, especially since the values and implications of this real solution align with previous resolutions, such as the Welcome in City ordinance and Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution. As a colonized state, while Puerto Ricans are citizens of the United States, they're not afforded the same rights and representations as other citizens. This bill would put the power back in the hands of those that have been disenfranchised and center its decision with those who have been under this occupation. Puerto Ricans should be the one society in the future of Puerto Rico, and I hope that the city council also supports this belief. I yield to the rest of my time.
Kay Collins.
Good evening, everybody. Kay Collins, for Carolab, East Hampton. I don't think I can say much more, things much more eloquently than Councilor Gomez has in the resolution, but I did want to speak in support of the resolution in favor of HR 8113 for Puerto Rican statehood. Since 1898, the U.S. has ruled the island as a colony. The citizens, about 3.3 million or so people are nominally American citizens, but without full representation in the federal government or full constitutional protections. And the devastations of Hurricanes Irma and Maria and the slowness of response to that shows us that, you know, not only is it a matter of politics, but also sometimes the matter of life or death. So I would like to strongly urge the council to support this resolution of Councilor Gomez's as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Libby Hernandez.
Thank you very much, and I'm very happy that you're having me here tonight. My name is Libby Hernandez, and I live at 245 Warner Street in Holyoke, Massachusetts. I am currently the city councillor for the Ward 4, and I would like to share today that I am attending this meeting in support of the Puerto Rico Self-Determination Bill, which I can say that I'm very happy that it was unanimously passed in our city council in Holyoke. Just like as all the other speakers previously said, I mean, the people of Puerto Rico deserve to have this self-determination power placed back into the island and the people of Puerto Rico because they have been colonized, marginalized, and for a long time, short-changed. We are intellectual people that have to be at the table making the decisions and being part of the dialogue, and I think that by this resolution being introduced and passed at municipal and on all different levels of Congress, it's really going to allow the people of Puerto Rico to finally have a say of how they want to be self-governing. I want to thank the East Hampton City Council and Councilor Gomez for presenting this, and I pray that it is voted in favor in tonight's meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Libby. Anyone else have any comment? Kara McElone. I hope I pronounced that correctly. I apologize if I didn't.
You did good. Thank you. I'm Kara McElone. I am the Executive Director of the Children's Advocacy Center of Hampshire County. I am an East Hampton resident as well. I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about what the Children's Advocacy Center does and as a way to introduce April as National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. The Children's Advocacy Center, also known as CAC, is located in Northampton. We coordinate care for kids who disclose abuse throughout Hampshire County. And the CAC model is based upon bringing a multidisciplinary team together. That team consists of police, prosecutors, DCF, medical and mental health providers, and advocates. And all these folks come together to come up with a comprehensive response to allegations of child abuse. Before, there were CACs, and we're fortunate there are CACs in every county in Massachusetts in most states. A child would have to, when they're ready to disclose abuse, would have to tell their story over and over again, go to a police station, go to a prosecutor's office, and basically be re-traumatized by having to just repeat this really difficult story. With our model, it's the adults that get together and come to the CAC physically in Northampton, and the child just has to tell that story once to a trained interviewer. We have, we have great partners who work with us to coordinate care, but it's really important to know that the Children's Advocacy Center is an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So we support children regardless of prosecution. All services are free of charge for as long as a family may need them. We're a child-friendly space. We're literally a house with murals and comfy couches. We have a small staff. It's myself, a child and family advocate, and a CSAC coordinator. CSAC is a commercial sexual exploitation of children, and around here, a lot of that looks like a kid's connecting with dangerous people online and then often meeting up with them in person. So you may say, why do we need this? So this is kind of the scary stats part. One in four girls is sexually abused before they turn 18 years old. One in six boys, and one in five children are sexually solicited online before they're 18. The vast majority of kids never tell anyone. But the CAC is here when and if they're ready to tell that story. The pandemic has been really hard on kids. It's really hard on everybody. But we know that for some children, they are not safe at home right now, and we rely on mandated reporters and school personnel to be the front, the front line of reporting abuse. During 2020, we had a pretty dramatic dip in reports of abuse here in Hampshire County. The biggest dip was in kids under seven years old, those kids who really, you know, had no place to be other than in their home. In Massachusetts, 84% of perpetrators of child abuse are someone the child knows, trusts, and often loves. So while we love to think that being home was safer for kids, for some kids, it's just, it's much more dangerous. So we're really excited that kids are starting to be back in school and being able to be with trusted adults again. The CAC is truly a model of a community response to child abuse. And so tonight, I'm just asking you all to think about a couple of things. First of all, speak up if you're concerned about the well-being of child, be that trusted adult in a child's life. If you can, reach out, come to me, and schedule a tour of the CAC house. You'll see firsthand how we help kids in East Hampton and throughout Hampshire County get the justice that they need and begin the healing process from abuse. And also join us Friday morning at 9:00 a.m. outside City Hall. We're going to be raising a flag to mark April as National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. And on a personal note, you know, I moved to East Hampton 23 years ago to raise my kids, and it's been a wonderful place, and I thank you all for all your hard work to make that be true. It's a great place for kids and families, but until every child is safe here in East Hampton and throughout Hampshire County, the CAC and all of us have work to do, and hopefully one day, you know, we'll be out of a job. But until then, the Children's Advocacy Center of Hampshire County is here to help kids who need us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kara. Kate Hobbs. I think I saw your hand.
Yes, hi, thank you. My name is Kate Hobbs. I live at 211 Park Street in East Hampton, and I'm here just to speak in support of the Puerto Rico Self-Determination Act and urge our councilors to approve the resolution. As a friend of the Puerto Rican community, both here in Western Mass and, you know, across the diaspora, I think it's an important action that we can take as a city to show our support, an important act to get the power back into the hands of Puerto Ricans on the island and on the mainland to make their own choice about what's right for their governance. So I just accept the resolution. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Any other folks who want to do some public speak? Okay. And could I, could I ask the folks who are not on the city council to turn off your cameras? I have kind of a wall of people in front of me, and it's, it's easier. I just, thank you so much. Okay, so we have a couple of minutes. I think we can probably start the public hearing a minute or two early. Would you concur, Councilor Rist?
I concur. I move that the public hearings be opened.
Second.
Motion, second to open the public hearing. All those in favor, Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Public hearings are now open. Councilor Rist.
Yes, councilors, we have two supplemental appropriations to be reviewed and voted on this evening. The first is a $10,000 appropriation from Free Cash. It's to cover the cost of utilities for electric bike and electric vehicle charging stations. It is thought that the charging stations for vehicles, of which there are now, and Jeff, you'll correct me, two stations in town, they are, they do charge to the public, but they're not creating enough revenue to make up for the utility cost at this time. It is hoped that they will eventually, but the council recognizes that this is a public service for electric vehicles that helps, obviously, the climate and everything else. Also, there is a free electric charging station at Williston, so there's some competition there. The electric bikes, Valley Bike Share charging, we do that without charge. If I'm incorrect on that, please let me know, Jeff, but that again is something we're doing for the, for the community to provide electricity to charge those bikes. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Bag to explain further, and he can also go highlight the Valley Bike Share report that's in our packet. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Councilor Rist. I think you did a great job summarizing. I mean, what, what we did is, over the past couple of years, is we've launched these initiatives, one for the electric vehicle charging stations and one for Valley Bike. Both are, you know, largely, almost entirely grant-funded in terms of getting the equipment into East Hampton. And I do want to acknowledge Greg, Greg Nollman's here for DPW, and what we're doing is we're, the way I've been describing this, or trying to, is with the electric vehicle charging stations, and actually the Valley Bike too, we're calibrating. So we created these initiatives through grants, both of which make East Hampton greener, more sustainable, more progressive, and are, we're trying to do, you know, we're trying to do things that support our residents and are part of the region. So with electric vehicle charging stations, we, I think as Marilyn Chappelle talks about sometimes, we stacked a bunch of grants on top of each other. So we coordinated them all so that the infrastructure for those was paid for through Eversource, and then we used two other grant funding sources, Green Communities, and then a program through Mass DEP, Mass EVIP, to pay for the actual charging units. So what's happening now in terms of calibrating is that the rates fluctuate, and we have not figured out the pattern yet. So, you know, initially, they were free, kind of on accident, for the first two months, and the usage was high. We had a lot of people using them, and then we initiated what we thought was going to be the first step anyway, was a payment for each charge, and then usage almost dropped entirely. And so we're in the process of calibrating that we, we want to have some charge for the electricity coming out of the units, but we want to make sure that it's still an incentive for people to use them and park there. So, you know, this is something that the rates are going to get adjusted over the next, I would say, six to eight months, as we can calibrate. I mean, we were in the middle of a pandemic, so usage all across the board is just down. The rates are going to be, I think, finally set by the Board of Public Works as we learn about what's happening. And then the one thing that we're actually still waiting for is, is Eversource to work with communities that they're, they have this demand charge that creates this wild fluctuation up, and there are conversations that they're going to try to pull that down and make it much more consistent for a municipality to deal with this. So some of the funding is going to go to pay for the electricity while we calibrate the system. And then, you know, the other funding for the Valley Bike Share, it's a little bit different take on it. We, you know, we never really anticipated the Valley Bike Share to be revenue generating, but it is a service that we provide, and over time, that will be an alternative mode of transportation that we hope as the system, you know, in East Hampton, the system will never be huge, but we could build a couple more stations, and it'll provide access to bikes for people who want to take short trips. And that's a, it's a real thing. It's a real initiative. You know, East Hampton joined Valley Bike Share two years ago. We got a grant of $250,000 to create the first four stations. And what some of this funding will do is, you know, we need to be able to pay for the electricity, and we're part of a regional membership, and so that structure has changed a little bit, and now we are, we're paying, East Hampton is paying some to support the entire system, and there's, there's a lot of administration that happens. So, you know, in the cover letter that was submitted, I did want to correct that we will be supporting both of these to some extent, and the hope is that within the next year, we'll have it calibrated, and, you know, ideally, there's a line item, you know, in DPW's budget for both of these, that then, kind of moving forward, would be consistent. So I did transmit to the city council in the, in the April 7th package, just the first annual report for Valley Bike Share, and, you know, it's going well. We had the pandemic call last year, but ridership was still, I would say, moderate for the middle of a pandemic. But overall, East Hampton's participation in the system is really important for us. We have a lot of leisure rides on the, on the, on the Manhattan Rail Trail, but as the system builds out, there, the goal is for people to be able to use these consistently to choose, instead of hopping in a car, you know, to go from, like, up Union Street, you know, we can, you can hop on a bike and get there. And so, you know, Union Street is a gap for us right now, so when Union Street gets, you know, reconstructed starting next year, that's the idea between 50 Payson and Old Town Hall, is you have that ability to ride a bike up there, and then from Old Town Hall, you can get to Pleasant Street, and it becomes a system. I'm almost done. And the last fun, great thing is that we were part of a regional grant, a second round, which is allowing us to fund through grants the installation of a fifth station at Parsons Street, the corner of Parsons and Federal Street. And so, you know, we're expecting that to pop up pretty soon, and we're going to do some outreach to that, to that neighborhood and promote the fact that most, most people are going to be eligible for an access pass for free, for this year especially, because of the pandemic, they want to be promoting people to ride the bikes. So we're going to set up, you know, an event on, on an upcoming Saturday to help sign people up for the access pass and kind of launch that fifth station. So I'm sure there's questions, but that's kind of the, the broad brush for that.
Anybody have questions for me or for Owen, I guess, Peg?
Councilor Zerrit.
Thank you, President Coniff. Two quick questions just in regards to, and you kind of spelled it out, Plan or Bag, in terms of the current plans to mitigate the cost of the city going forward, but one is, is there any consideration in terms of setting fees for the charging station to make it similar to gasoline, where price fluctuates based on number of economic factors and based on the prices from Eversource? Could you have varying prices in order to accommodate, you know, when the cost of energy is higher load or consumers? And then also quickly, I asked, I think I asked this before, but are there opportunities to supply power to these charging stations via some sort of solar, so we rely less on Eversource and also just make it more sustainable?
I know the first one, so I think over time, we can set that up. The best description I have is we're calibrating right now, and we have some information that needs to get to the Board of Public Works for them to understand how the system will work. But once we understand that, and if we can get the demand charge down, then the Board of Public Works will be able to set rates, and it's not overly complicated because once we understand what we need for rates or how we want to have them functioning, you know, you set them up, and, you know, everyone has a, an app on their phone, and so when they're, that's how they find the stations and they see the rates. So, you know, adjusting the rates is not complicated. It's just a matter of setting them to recoup some of the electrical costs that we will have, but also not, you know, the, I think the big equation is that we want to try to recoup our costs, but we don't want the electricity to cost more than it would for gas. So that's what we're trying to figure out, and it just hasn't, we haven't had enough time or usage to really do that yet. In terms of solar, I'm sure it's possible, but I think it's kind of like the next level is if we can get the solar, like, through the grid, or whether we'd have to have, like, a structure somewhere to directly power it, but those are conversations that I think could happen over time.
Counselor Peak.
Just out of curiosity, barring a large shift either way in the sort of price of electricity, do you see it as possible for these things to pay for themselves and still be, like, used?
So just to distinguish from the Valley Bike Share, we don't expect to generate revenue from that, but for the EV chargers, yeah. I think, I think there, my understanding is that it is possible. The, the demand charge is this, the thing that we haven't overcome yet, that if that gets removed or adjusted by Eversource, then over time, like, we are calibrating, so we, we invested in it, we set them up, and we paid a couple of electric bills already, like, we've been paying electric bills, but the rates aren't set. So at a point in time when we have the rate structure proper, from there on out, we should be able to cover the electrical cost. I mean, it's not a lot, and even the Valley Bike Share, they, you know, they, each, each Valley Bike Share station's like, like, $35 a month for the electricity, and in theory, the EV chargers should be in that range. So over time, you know, that was, we did that through council a couple of months ago as we set up the revolving account. We might have been a little ahead of the, you know, we might have been a little quick with that. We now have the account where the, the charges will go in there, but it's taking a while to build up that fund to pay the bills. So we have this time of, time of flux while we're still paying for some of the bills, but over time, that's what everyone is saying, and there's a lot of other municipalities going through this kind of calibration time right now. You know, there's all these initiatives, and people were latching on and getting the grants, getting them installed, and here we are, kind of in real time, working out the, the payment structure.
Anyone else? Counselor Kuzinski.
Jeff, I was under the impression when we set up the programs that everything was going to be paid for by the revenue that we were generating, would be revenue neutral, the city wouldn't gain, but the city wouldn't lose. And now I'm hearing about demand charges and changes in charges, and we don't know how much it's going to be. So I guess I'm, I would feel better about the whole process, I think, if I understood how much are we paying? Like, what are we being charged now? And what are we collecting, just so we can have an idea? And I may have missed that, and I apologize if I, if I did.
I believe that question came up in the committee, and I don't think Greg or I have had time to pull everything together in that form. Just, I think, well, I guess my response would be that we're hoping that we can have this allocation for the rest of the year, and I think, I think there's excess in this, in this request here, but I think starting July 1st, you know, if it ends up in a line item or is another request, I think that that, I heard what everyone has asked about that, and we would have that information for next time. You know, we're paying bills. You know, Greg's office has paid a couple, Planning Department has one-time funds that I've been using to pay for the electric bills, and it's just simply not really sustainable for, for us to be paying the bills out of one-time funds. So this $10,000 request is to fill the gap between now and June 30th, which again, Greg, I mean, I think it's excess. Then I think if we come back, when we come back, because I think we will come back after July 1st, I think we could provide that data pretty easily at that point. We just simply, I, I can't speak for Greg, but I'm pretty sure we haven't had time to pull that, those bills together.
So we have two, two charging station locations in the city, and we have, what, April, May, June left in the fiscal year, and we're looking for $10,000 to support the cost of electricity. How much are we collecting if we don't know exactly what we're paying for the electricity? Can I ask, how much are we collecting from people who are using the electricity to charge their vehicles?
Yep. It's data we have. We have the software that comes with the charging stations. I do not have that tonight. I don't have that information with me. Greg, do you recall how we came up with the $10,000 request?
My, my goal with that was just to have enough money in there to get, to get us through the rest of the fiscal year. I mean, I'm seeing bills for the stations, the bike stations around $33 a month. The EV charger station here at 50 Payson, I have $183 that was up to per month, and what, what's happening is ChargePoint, the company that owns the chargers, collects money up to a certain dollar amount, and then we'll turn that over to the city, and we, we can then use that money to pay, you know, offset the cost of the bill. But we don't, don't know exactly when they will turn that, you know, how much, when we're going to hit that point where they will turn the money over to us, and I didn't want to have to come back to council, you know, again, to be able to cover these.
Yeah, and I wrote in the, I wrote in the letter that, that the council got in the most recent packet, one of the, you know, I think what, the big chunk, if you call it big, would be the, our contribution to the Valley Bike Share program is $6,000. So that, if that's factored in, which it may be, that would make a lot of sense, because that would be the $6,000 contribution for the city to go into the regional Bike Share program and, and support the admin, then it would be the electrical charges for each bike station plus the electric for the EV chargers. I mean, if it's super critical, we could continue, I guess, the hearing and come back. I know we have all the data, and we can, we can justify it. I just don't have it handy.
So Jeff, is it fair to say that these stations, just sitting there, whether anybody drives up and uses them, cost money? In, is there some sort of a maintenance charge on a monthly basis just to have it there, even if nobody uses it?
Yes. There's a baseline electric bill that we get from Eversource, and then the, the challenge has been the demand charge makes it variable. And then the, the challenge has been the demand charge makes it variable. So like Greg, you know, I've seen bills for $145 for the month for the EV chargers. And then there's a bill that's like $70 for the EV chargers that have come in. So, you know, we could, I think it's pretty easy. You just don't have it in a spreadsheet form in, in front of me, like to go back since we installed them and show what the rate was or what the bill were, what the bill was.
Counselor Peak, I saw your hand.
Yes, thanks. One question I, I just have is, this might seem unrelated, but I, I feel like it's related. How long does it take for a, an electric vehicle to charge on one of these things?
Yeah. So you're going into, Mayor might be able to speak, but you're going, you're going into like very detailed information that I wasn't, not, definitely not the expert here. I don't even have an EV car, so.
Mayor. So I, I would say, I have a 2015 electric car and to fully, you know, charge or how much I'd get per hour is about 30% of my battery, 30% of my battery. But I, I would defer to Counsel Rothschild, who has a newer electric vehicle bike, you know, a 2015 battery. It's about 30% for every hour it's on.
Counsel Rothschild, do you have anything to add to that? No? Okay. And what does that mean, 30%? So you have to have it plugged in like three and a half hours to get a full charge-ish? Is that what that means?
Yes, yes, on those. There, there are faster ones elsewhere, but on, yeah, on, on ours. And, and if I could just add something out onto what Planner Bag was saying and Counsel Kuzinski's comments, the calibration, and I've actually talked to other municipalities, the calibration of the rates are completely off. I mean, we've not, we did not have these operational enough before the pandemic to really figure out what they're gonna, how they should be priced. So to look back is, you know, and I, I would say even if you look back from day one, it's getting the, you know, getting it on Google as a charging station, getting it on ChargePoint, the app, plugin, the app. So let's say the first two and a half months before COVID, getting the word out, it starts to pick up months three or four and we're in a pandemic that we still are in. So it, you know, to figure out that calibration and whatnot, we're really, we're making pretty minimal, you know, minimal changes to it. Thinking that usage will go up as, as cities and towns open more.
Thank you. Counsel Rothschild.
I was going to say, I think that of course usage will go up when the pandemic is, you know, as, as we move forward. And I think it's going to be more beneficial or more appealing to visitors to our town. Because if you live in this town, like it doesn't take me very far to drive downtown. So my car is like, you know, I haven't really burned much charge from my house to downtown. So I might not bother with charging and pay to charge if my house is like a mile away. But I, but to say that, but the same token, when I go to North Hampton, I'm always trying to get the, the, the electric spots. You know, when I go to other places and we are a popular destination. And I do think as, as people start returning to visiting our town for the concerts and everything else that we offer here, restaurants, so many fun things that we will, they will definitely pick up from visitors.
Yes, Mayor. I, I would just, Counsel Kuzinski's got me thinking about numbers. I think it would be, it would be interesting to see what we pay to keep up parking spaces in the downtown area and what our charging stations cost. Because one of the things that people love about East Hampton is we do not have meters. And there are a lot of other cities who have free charging, just like free parking. And I'm not, I, I just want to put that kind of out there, like New Haven. You know, I just drove to New York City and I timed it by chargers, like, you know, that, that, that. And yeah, I paid for one charge and it was free others. So I, I just, you know, I'm not, yeah, it would just be interesting to see what, what do we do to maintain parking spots? You know, lines and, and stuff like that compared to the charging. So just to throw that out there.
Counsel Kuzinski.
I don't have any problem being competitive with other cities. I agree with the mayor. If, if other cities, North Hampton don't, doesn't have a charge, Amherst doesn't have a charge, Oyoke, then maybe that's a common practice. I'm not aware of what a common practice is, but it had been told when we voted on this originally, it would be self-sustaining with the fee that would be charged. We, the city wouldn't make any money, but we wouldn't be losing money in the, in the process. I wouldn't mind if, I guess, if we were saying we're getting 75% of what the cost is to the city for the electricity. I just would like to know what it is because it wasn't what we originally voted on. So that's the reason. And I may feel uncomfortable voting in the affirmative at this time without that information.
And I, I, I would agree, but I think we also have to understand, as the mayor indicated, most of the time these have been in place, we've been in the middle of a pandemic and no one's coming to East Hampton. So the data would almost be kind of worthless right now because it would show very low usage and we might all panic. But in the next year, that could flip completely around. So I, I, like, I'm as much into data as the next person, but I think we have to understand the environment that we're working in, what is driving demand and what is holding demand back. And I think the pandemic is a big bogey at this point. We don't know what the impact is. I also, and I don't know who said it, but I also think that having these chargers is a service and a draw. And, and it's something that as we, as the city comes back to life, this is something that we should just have and offer. And which is not to say, I don't think we should evaluate the costs. I think we absolutely should. And we should know what it costs on a month-over-month basis in a normal, sustainable period to better evaluate the long-run efficacy of these, these chargers. And, you know, I, I think right now we're trying to get to the next place and they need a little money to do that. But long run, I, you know, it might be a bigger discussion to talk about, do we just maintain them forever and ever and ever? And what does that cost? Or do we want to try to make them competitive and maybe, I don't know, maybe there's a draw for the, the business in the community for having them. Counsel Rist?
Well, I have a couple of things. First of all, I did say it was a service for the community. And this counselor has no objection if in the future they are free. I look at that as improving our transportation and the attraction of East Hampton at a tourist level. I look at it as a service to the climate because we're providing electric vehicle charging stations. And I know that Valley Bike Share is going to improve recreation as well as transportation with less gasoline-powered vehicles being used because we have bikes. Now, I know that's not what we discussed early on, the pre-pandemic. And I feel though, that having thought about this over time, as much as I'd love it to be revenue neutral, I'd have no problem if the mayor eventually said, we're going to put a line item into this electricity and we're not going to charge for these stations. I don't know if that'll happen, but I have no problem with that. As for tonight's appropriation, continuing the hearing makes no sense to me because we're going to have to pay this. Regardless of the data we get, I think the data is important. And I believe that Jeff and Greg can send that to all of us so we're better informed. When the budget comes our way in June, if the mayor has to put a line item in for these charging. But I've gotten ever source bills and to understand them is pathetic. And I don't know how hard it is for a city, which has a hell of a lot more electric usage than I do. So I would like to give the city some time to gather that data and it may take a year. In any case, I'm hoping we vote on this this evening because budgetarily, they need the money. And waiting a, a month doesn't make sense to me. We're going to still have to do it. So that's just my thoughts on this.
Counsel Derby.
Yeah. Thanks, Madam President. You know, I have no problem with appropriation tonight. I, I think what Counsel Rist said makes a lot of sense right now. But I, I would just say a couple of things for like future thoughts. And, and so number one, like I know that Ford and the car, the new car company Rivian are in the process of building out nationwide networks. So, you know, I think it's important for us to make sure that we keep that on the radar as these, you know, electric vehicle companies are looking for places to put their chargers, for us to be open as a community to say, hey, bring them here. And for us to make that, you know, for the planning and for the mayor, you know, that, just to put it on your radar. I, I think it's something worth thinking about or looking into. And the, the second thing is, you know, like when cannabis came in, we had no problem doing community host agreements. And, and, you know, I, the way I look at it is why don't we, for the, the new large solar installations that are coming into town, why don't we do a community host agreement that say that they're going to pay for our electric for charging stations? And how about even better, to put a, put a, a one-up on that, charge the gas stations in town, a community host agreement for them to pay for the charging stations in town. Because, you know, that's kind of the, right? We're trying to go off of fossil fuels. So, you know, a little incentive, but that's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to put that out there before I forgot what those things. So, thanks.
Anyone else? Jeff?
I think this is great. I mean, I, I'm hearing it all in terms of the future conversations. We're, we, we, it would be great to get the appropriation tonight because we're paying the bills. You know, two quick things is Greg, it, my, like, our understanding is that if this money is not spent by June 30th, it's going to go back. It's, it's, it's not like we're just, so I think the number seems, sounds high, maybe Counsel Kuzinski, but that's my understanding. Greg, is that, is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. So we're just trying to make sure we have enough and a big chunk of that's the Valley Bike stuff. But thinking ahead, something that Counsel Derby said, you know, it's similar to other discussions that we're going to have as a community. So we're, we're probably, I would just guesstimate about $375,000 grant-funded into the EV chargers and the Valley Bike Share. So that's a rough, that's a rough estimate. We had, we're at least in for 275 for the bike share from grants. And then the Valley, and then the EV chargers was all grant-funded. So to leverage $10,000, you know, for covering the cost of electricity and maybe maintenance and things like that, the $10,000 investment of the city has rewarded us with like approximately $375,000 worth of grant-funded things. So we do need to acknowledge that by doing all these grant-funded projects, we are accepting certain things. But the comparison, I think it's, it's, it's modest. I think it's reasonable to be talking about this. And if the mayor, whether it pops up in this coming budget or the budget after, I mean, I think the line item would make sense. And I think whenever that pops up, we'll have a lot more data to, to show you because I think the pandemic really threw some stuff off. I was going back to all the things that have happened during the pandemic. And the, the second, the, the bike share location on Parsons Street came forward during that time. And then the electric vehicle charging stations came up all during the pandemic. So, you know, we're, we don't have like the clear data source right now. We have the electric bills. That's not a problem, but the demand and things like that are, are definitely off.
Counsel Kuzinski.
I have no problems with making it an affirmative vote. I guess I'm just asking, can anyone tell the council, how much does an individual pay when they go up to one of the charging stations the city has and they charge their vehicle? What is the rate?
I think the mayor knows.
Mayor?
The mayor knows well. $2 an hour.
How much?
$2 an hour.
So we know that it, I'm sorry, we know that it's $2 an hour. We know it's $2 an hour on the collection side and we don't know what the expense side is. Okay. At least we have some information. Thank you so much, Mayor. I appreciate that.
Anyone, anyone else from the council before I open it up to the public? Anyone from the public who would like to make a comment or have a question on this topic? Go ahead and raise your hand. Okay. I'm not seeing any. Counsel Rist?
Okay, I'll make a motion. I move that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount request is $10,000 to be transferred from free cash, $10,000 to be transferred to the electric bike revenue account, $5,000 and the electric vehicle revenue account, $5,000. For the following purpose, electric vehicle and bicycle charging stations have been installed at various locations around the city. Earlier in fiscal year 21, an enterprise fund was established to handle the finances associated with the operation of these stations. And the Department of Public Works has been tasked with managing the fund. In time, the electric vehicle charging stations should generate sufficient revenue to cover the charges associated with operating all the stations. However, the stations have not yet generated enough revenue to cover their expenses for fiscal year 21. There is a request for $10,000 to be appropriated from free cash to cover these utility expenses for the remainder of FY '21. I move that we accept this.
Second?
Motion is second to appropriate $10,000 from free cash to the electric bike revenue and the electric vehicle revenue accounts. Any further discussion? Counsel Kuzinski.
I believe I'll be voting in the affirmative. However, I would very much like to see the figures before with anything that we consider for the future. I understand that you're making that promise from Planner Bag. I take that very seriously. When I heard that we voted on these, I understood that they would be revenue neutral. I am voting in the affirmative because the Valley Bike Share is a great portion of the $10,000 that we are appropriating. That's my understanding, to the tune of a be somewhere between $5,000 and $6,000. That leaves bills of about $100 a month to 170, something like that. Okay. I can live with that. We can have Mr. Nudelman move forward. And I apologize for this being a lengthy process, but it's important that we manage the city's finances well. Thank you very much for your answers.
Any other discussion? Barbara. Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Dave P. Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Beg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counsel Rist?
Uh, yes. Excuse me, I'm trying to pull up the next one for some reason. We have another supplemental appropriation request. The amount is $60,000. This request was made to, from the Department of Public Works and the Planning Department. Together, they are trying to get a grant which will help pay for the sewer and water infrastructure improvement on Cherry Street. This is a case where we have to spend money to generate funds. This money will be used to design the infrastructure repairs necessary. For the record, and I think Greg will go into it a little more, we have had to repair these water and sewer infrastructure quite often in the last few years at probably extensive costs. And it's about time we start repairing our sewer and water infrastructure. And I'd like to thank both the Department of Public Works and the Planning Department, which have joined together to try and work out these grants for what we have major infrastructure problems in the city. And this is a start. And this is Cherry Street. And I'm going to turn it over to Greg to explain it further and to answer your questions.
So one of the main goals of this appropriation is, the main goal of it is to get the water and sewer utility replacement on Cherry Street designed. If we can get that designed and have a, a solid cost estimate in hand, we're, we're in a very advantageous position come May or June to apply for CDBG funding to then have the physical replacement of the, the work done. We're currently working on the, the municipal vulnerability planning grant for Cherry Street, which will handle the surface and stormwater and green infrastructure upgrades and repair of the, the failing out, outfall at the end of Cherry Street. And it, it, it makes total sense to, to get underground there, get the water and sewer repaired, replaced, and then have that done before we start working above it. Because if, if we don't replace the water sewer infrastructure, we'll, we'll be there digging up the new green infrastructure because we're going to have to go and fix it. So, you know, Cherry Street presents some, several challenges for our crews. So the sewer mains is deep as 13 feet in spots. It really, it's kind of the, you know, the, the limit or over the limit. And I, I never like to have our crews digging anywhere near their limit. like to have our crews digging anywhere near their limit. But, you know, we've had to there to maintain, to, you know, maintain services. So, it's really, hopefully this will all come together for us and we'll be able to get in line for that grant funding. And we can, we can get the work done without having to look to the ratepayers. So, Jeff may want to add a little more, but he's a little more with the CDBG part, but.
Greg, when you, when we, we kind of know the infrastructure of the city is a little shaky in terms of water and sewer.
Yep.
Where would you categorize this particular area of, I mean, are we talking this?
And the, the main reason for that is, it's really no older than many similar sections of the city. But the depth of it and challenges presented digging to, to that type of depth and the groundwater you run into and how hard it is for our crews to do it, is really, you know, I, our guys can go and dig, our crews can go and dig, you know, six, seven feet and there's no problems. But, you know, when you really start getting over to the depth of over 10 feet or, you know, down to 13, it's a different.
Is that a safety issue?
It is. And it, and it's, and it's just very challenging with the equipment that we have. We can only dig, we're not a huge construction outfit that can dig to depths of 20, 30 feet. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any other counselors? Counsel Peak and then Counsel Flood?
I just want to speak as much in favor of this project as I can. You know, that's part of Precinct Three. And I've gotten a number of constituent emails over the years about concerns with, you know, with our, our whole infrastructure on Cherry Street and the sort of challenges that it actually poses for households there. It's, you know, when there's these sorts of big infrastructure problems, it's always discouraging, as you all know, when constituents reach out and you're like, I don't know when we're ever going to be able to address that. So, it's so exciting for me to see a project where we can actually go and say, hey, yeah, we're going to come and we're going to fix your problems. So, really, really, really excited about this. Couldn't possibly support it more.
Right. I don't think Counsel Flood actually had her hand raised. So, anyone else?
Just real quick, if I could.
Counsel Bag?
Just, I just want to compliment Greg and, you know, the leadership through GPW and the ability to collaborate on this. I think it's really important. And I think the state, sorry, there's someone in my house, is the state is revamping their, their approach to grants. And I think as we look at what the state is looking to do with their grants, the, the key word is going to be shovel ready. And I think, you know, the reality, I think that Greg is seeing is that we're going to need, we're going to need these design and construction estimates, no matter what. If, and we're, we're going to, we're going to try something pretty ambitious, which is to pair the block grant with the MVP, two grant funding sources that do not talk to each other. But we think that we have this compelling argument that we want to do the whole street. And we have found the two funding sources that we think can do it. But, and this is one of the early steps that we need is to get, to get the plan shovel ready. And I think, kind of moving forward, it's, I think it's a terminology that you'll see through various funding sources to get a project so it has a design and a cost estimate. It makes us so that if we don't get the block grant, you know, which is possible, we'll have the plans and we'll seek the next available funding source for it. So, like Greg said, I mean, we have to do this project down there. So, right now, we're going to try to do this quick with the designs and then you get, try for block grant, which would, again, like Greg said, is not something that the ratepayers would pay.
Okay. Any other counselors? Anyone from the public who has any comments or questions regarding this issue? Can raise your hand. Not seeing any? Counsel Wrist?
I move that the City Council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $60,000 to be transferred from retained enterprise retained earnings, $60,000, to be transferred to the sewer Cherry Street Design Account, $30,000, and the water Cherry Street Design Account, $30,000. For the following purpose, in coordination with the Planning Department, the Department of Public Works is working to obtain community development block grants, funding to replace aging water and sewer utilities on Cherry Street. In order to be eligible for consideration of CDBG funding, we have to, we need to have shovel ready plans and bid documents prepared for this work. That is a motion.
Second?
Second. Motion is second for supplemental appropriation of $60,000 from enterprise retained earnings to the sewer and water accounts for Cherry Street Design. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Motion passes. That concludes the public hearing. Counsel Wrist?
I move the public hearings be closed. Second?
Motion is second to close the public hearings. Barbara?
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes. The public hearing is now closed. Moving on to communication from elected official boards and committees, we've already talked about the Valley Bike Share, but do any other counselors have anything they would like to say in the three minutes that I will allot them? Oh, come on, really? Wow. Oh, there it is. Counsel Zaret?
I don't want to disappoint you, President Coniff. Just quickly, I found out the other day that our community center, which we're all aware of the great services they provide, especially during, in the midst of the pandemic, they have distributed over a million pounds of food in the last year to throughout the community and adjacent communities. So, just a big congratulations and thanks for Robin and her crew and all the people who volunteer there, that great community resource. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to ask you if this is the right time to present the resolution?
It is. Let's just see if anybody has anything else, and then we will move to that. Any other comments from anyone? Okay. Counsel Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say thank you to Counselor Hernandez from Holyoke City Council. I want to say thank you to Javier Luengos for, for the feedback on this resolution. And I would say thank you for everybody who talk in favor of this resolution. As you know, trying to be brief, because I think the resolution is, is kind of clear and direct to the point. But I just want to say that Puerto Rico has been a colony for more than 500 years, 400 year under the Spain, and more than 100 year under United States. I think this bill that is presented at the Congress and at the Senate at this time is basically to resolve something with social justice with the people of Puerto Rico, that they don't have the same rights that we have at the states. And is the first time the Congress is committed to accept the decision of the Puerto Rico. And I think that, that's really important for me. Why, why is something should be in favor of this? We have thousands of Puerto Rican living around us. I know the Puerto Rican community here in town, in our city is not that big. But we have neighbors like Holyoke, like Springfield, like Northampton. The, the population of Puerto Rican is, is really high. And we have to send a message to the Congress that we are here together. And the social justice for the Puerto Rican community have to be soon and have to be now. And sending the message to Congress, Congressman Neal, and our two senators and the federal level, is, I think it's really important to tell them that we are with them supporting this bill. And that's why this, this, tonight, respectfully asking my colleague counselors to approve this resolution tonight. If anyone have, if anyone have any question, please don't hesitate to ask because I'm ready for it.
Do you want to, do you want to do the resolution and then right before we vote, if anyone has questions, we can add that as well? If you'd like to go ahead and read it?
I can do that. I have to change a few things at the resolution.
Okay.
So, instead of making the amendment, I'm going to read it the right way.
Okay.
And it's not a lot of stuff, just basically is the number of the bill, the change. And I'm just going to add Senator Bob Menendez, because he introduced the bill at the Senate that I think it should be included in this resolution. Basically, that's the change. If anyone objected, I'm going to read it out with the changes.
No objection. Go ahead.
All right. In the form of a motion, I want to read this. The city of East Hampton, in the City Council, April 7th, where as the treaty of Parias between the United States and Spain signed at December 10, 1898, ratified by Congress in April 11th, of the same year ended the Spanish-American War, and officially cede Puerto Rico to the United States. And whereas, on April 12, 1900, the US Congress enacted the Fodder Act, Public Law 56191, which replaced the temporary military government and established, established a civilian governing structure led with limited local participation in the island at first end. Whereas, on March 2nd, 1917, President Woodrow Wilson signed the Jones Act into law, which among other things granted Puerto Ricans, US citizen, separate the executive, judicial, and legislative branch of Puerto Rico government, provide limited civil rights to the certain individuals, and create a locally elected bicameral legislature. And whereas, the enactment of the Jones Act also means that most United States laws went into effect in Puerto Rico, including the National Defense Act of 1916, which established the composition of the United States military. And as result, more than 20,000 Puerto Ricans served in the US Armed Forces during World War I, and tens of thousands more have served in every US war and conflict ever since. And whereas, a serious Supreme Court decision made in the early 20th century knows as the insular cases, established Puerto Rico is owned by and no part of the United States. And whereas, the approval of the Federal Electoral Government Act by President Harrison S. Trump, Truman, in 1947 establishes that Puerto Ricans, Puerto Rico government had to be elected through a democratic process every four years since 1948. And whereas, on July 3, 1952, the people of Puerto Rico overwhelmingly approved a constitution that was drafted by the people, which officially established the Commonwealth status of Puerto Rico by popular referendum. And whereas, a Commonwealth, all Puerto Ricans are United States citizens and can serve in the United States Armed Forces. However, resident of Puerto Rico do not have voting representation in the United States Congress and are not entitled to electoral votes for president. And whereas, as US citizen Puerto Ricans pay federal taxes, social, social security, and Medicare, but no federal income tax. And whereas, Puerto Ricans have since voted in six non-binding plebiscites in 1967, 1993, 1998, 2012, 2017, and most recently on November 3, 2020. And whereas, the most recent referenda were merit by voting irregularities, confusing ballot language rejections by United States Department of Justice, rejected both the 2017 and 2020 referenda. And whereas, aside from being rejected by United States Department of Justice, the 2017 referenda was also boycotted. And 23% of registered voters cast ballots in the island, where voter participation often hover over 80%. And whereas, it's notable that in the November 2020 statehood yes or no referendum, which was also summarily rejected by the US DOJ for excluding all non-statehood options and/or for other reasons, the, the result clearly showed that the island is split almost in half, leading to another inconclusive vote. And whereas, Senator Bob Menendez from New Jersey and Puerto Ricans Congresswoman Nidia Velazquez and Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez have recently introduced the Puerto Rican Self-Determination Act of 2020, Bill HR 2070 S. 865, that recognized the inherent authority of the people of Puerto Rico to call for a constitutional assembly on status. And S. 865 slash HR 2070 is based on bipartisan bill introduced in 2007 by the Senator Edward Kennedy, which had widespread support and will establish a similar process. And whereas, this piece of legislation put Puerto Ricans in the driver's seat of their own political future and will empower Puerto Ricans to recognizing that they are the ones who should democratically, democratically decide the process, participate in the deliberation, and make the final determination over the political status of the island. And whereas, the P E W Research Center estimate then, than 5.1 million Puerto Ricans reside in the United, in the 50 US states and the District of Columbia. And whereas, this is substantially greater number than the population of Puerto Rico itself, which was 3.6 million in 2013, has been in decline for the past few years, largely due to outmigration, economic, economic challenge, and natural disaster. And whereas, according to the 2010 United States Census, 319, 42 Puerto Rican lived in Massachusetts, the fifth largest Puerto Rican population in the United States after New York, Florida, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. And whereas, the social, economy, and political climate in Puerto Rico has had directly impact on the many Puerto Rican American families who call Massachusetts their home. And now, therefore, being resolved that the East Hampton City Council called upon Congress, Richard E. Neal, to co-sponsor the Puerto Rican Self-Determination Act of 2020, HR 2070. Be it further resolved that the East Hampton City Council so called upon a United States Senator Elizabeth Warren and Edward Markey, the Massachusetts Federal delegation, and all of Congress to support the passage of S. 865 slash HR 2070.
Second?
Motion is second to accept the resolution for the Puerto Rico equity, really, and the support of the bill to create more equity and social justice for Puerto Rico in the United States and in the government of the United States. Any further discussion or any questions? Counsel Rothschild?
I just want to thank Counsel Gomez for bringing this forward and the education that came with the resolution. It was very, it was very enlightening to read. I also think that whether or not we have Puerto Ricans living in the state Massachusetts, what we have, which we do have a large population, I think it's fitting that the state that where the colonists threw the tea over for being taxed without representation should support another body of people being taxed without representation in the form of a colony. So, I think it's very fitting that our state stands up for the rights of the people of Puerto Rico. So, thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Counsel Zaret?
I just wanted to quickly thank Counsel Gomez for bringing this forward. You know, I've focused so long on thinking about the discussion of statehood for Puerto Rico that I appreciate the council reframing the discussion as really the, creating an opportunity for a people who truly are currently colonized to make their own decisions and determine their own destiny. And maybe ultimately, that's, that becomes a discussion of statehood, or maybe it becomes a discussion of complete independence. But I appreciate that because I just hadn't framed it that way before in my mind. And it makes total sense to me. I'm in complete support.
Anyone else? Counsel Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to add that I have the language from the bill, the Congress, and I can share that with you guys after the meeting. I can send that too.
Thank you. Counsel Kozinski, I saw your hand.
I don't know if anyone else feels this way, but it makes me feel like we are watching enslavement. If we talk about taxation without representation, if, as if we are back three and four centuries ago. There is absolutely no reason not that self-determination shouldn't be a right of the people of Puerto Rico. I congratulate you, Counsel Gomez, for bringing this forward into the attention of East Hampton and to continue the discussion. But I'm frankly just appalled. But I'm frankly just appalled that we're here discussing it and not making it happen immediately. This needs to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, if we're ready to vote, Barbara?
Tom Peake? Dan Rust?
Aye, enthusiastically.
Who is that, Barbara? Lindsay Rothschild?
Faro Kefi, yes.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Jay P. Kuzinski? Omar, could I just ask that you send me those corrected?
Yes, I will send them as soon as it is over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
This resolution has passed. Congratulations. All right, anyone have anything else regarding comments from counselors before we move on on the agenda? We have listed on the, and I don't know if, okay, before we launch into the Mayor's Pledge, there's one thing I did want to say, and I am happily surprised that Bree and Jackie and Amy are here from the Health Department, because I was actually going to make a comment, didn't know you were coming, about the absolute amazing job that this group is doing related to the pandemic and keeping us all safe and the day-to-day stuff that they do every day. I've been actively engaged with Jackie, trying to get vaccine appointments to the folks who are underserved in our community. To say that it's been rewarding is an understatement, and to hear the joy and relief in people's voices when we reach out to them and tell them that we have an appointment for them in a few days. And it's just, it's just been amazing. And Amy and the data that she's bringing forward and making it so digestible and easy to understand, just an amazing job. And I, oh, I also see Maggie Hebert's here. Just an amazing job. And I really just wanted to give you guys a shout out because I think that, you know, in years past, the Health Department was kind of a footnote. It's now like the leader in the city, and you guys are doing a great job, and my hat's off to you. So thank you for everything that you're doing. It's amazing. And that is a segue, Mayor, if you would like to move into your speaking portion of the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do, I want to actually start with two things that aren't under my section. One, I just really, I cannot impress upon the residents of East Hampton that we're still in the middle of a pandemic. I think it's very notable that we have 37% of our residents that are vaccinated. However, our positivity rate is 1.51. Compare that to the county, which is 0.69. So we are the hotspot of Hampshire County, even though we have a pretty competitive vaccination rate. The variant, the latest variant, is all over our state and clearly in East Hampton. I know it's very exciting when you watch the news that we are seeing light at the end of the tunnel, but the mask mandates are in place and will be in place for some time. But again, please, let's not, let's not forget that we are still in the midst of a pandemic that could take a sharp turn upward. And East Hampton, according to the state dashboard, is trending higher, while our county is no change. The bottom line is, we are a hotspot. Even though we have people who are vaccinated, we are a hotspot, our infections are growing. And that is so, so, so concerning when you think about opening schools like we have, and we're getting ready for camps and hopefully to have, you know, some activities. So I can't impress enough about it. And that said, I will segue to the Health Department and some very well-deserved certificates of negotiation while I get to the page on my computer. Okay. So I'd like to enter three certificates of recognition into the public record with also placement in each employee's personnel record. And I'd like to start with our Health Director, Bree, gosh, I can stat, I'm so sorry, Bree. Certificate of Recognition, whereas the City of East Hampton wishes to recognize Bree as a back for her leadership throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, Bree was the only health inspector, agent, and now director for the first half of the pandemic, and kept up with the chaotic, ever-changing pace of the pandemic. And whereas, Bree has set high standards for our Health Department and brought us all up to date in aspects of public health and unknowingly prepared us for 2020. And now, therefore, I, Nicole, Mayor LaChappelle, on behalf of the citizens of the City of East Hampton, present this certificate to Bree. I've since that, I'll spell that out phonetically. Given under the corporate seal of the City of East Hampton this 23rd day of March in the year 2021. Signed, Nicole LaChappelle, Mayor of East Hampton. Before I move on to the other one, I would just, the language in the certificate of recognition was brought forward by Maggie Hebert, who's the Chair of the Board of Health. Maggie and I have had several conversations over the last year. And I speak a little bit for Maggie and certainly feel it for myself, to watch the professional growth of Bree as the head of the Health Department, as well as watching Jackie become a superhero on the phones, getting appointments, has been one of the assuring things in this pandemic. And our city has just served so well. The other, the next certificate of recognition is for Amy Hart, who is our newer public health nurse who was hired in the deep end and instantly dove into it and has worked so well with the members of our department, but also my office and the School Department, and working with Meg Harvey on the school data and making sure that we are on the same page when we release those data. That said, Amy Hart, certificate of recognition, whereas the City of East Hampton wishes to recognize Amy Hart for her work as public health nurse throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas, Amy has designed and implemented a weekly dashboard for our municipality to use as a reference for school system decisions, city hall work, and general information for the public. And whereas, Amy fully took over the contact tracing without hesitation and pulled it all together for a more comprehensive approach to managing the pandemic. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Nicole LaChappelle, on the behalf of the citizens of the City of East Hampton, present this certificate of recognition to Amy Hart, given under the corporate seal of the City of East Hampton this 23rd day of March in the year 2021. Signed, Nicole LaChappelle, Mayor of East Hampton, Massachusetts. I would also, again, as I referred to Jackie as a superhero, the superhero Jackie Sinkowitz. Like to read her certificate of recognition, whereas the City of East Hampton wishes to recognize Jackie Sinkowitz for her work throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, Jackie has been consistent with sharing information on social media as well as over email and phone. And whereas, Jackie has gone above and beyond to sign residents up for COVID-19 vaccine appointments. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Nicole LaChappelle, on behalf of the citizens of East Hampton, present this certificate to recognition to Jackie Sinkowitz, given under the corporate seal of the City of East Hampton this 23rd day of March in the year 2021. Signed, Nicole LaChappelle, Mayor of East Hampton. I'll close my comments on this part of my mayor communications, expressing a great deal of thanks to Maggie Hebert, who's the Board of, the Board of Health Chair. I don't think when Maggie accepted my appointment and your approval as her being the board, I think two things. One, she didn't read the fine print that there was a pandemic coming. And two, which was a surprise to me as well, is that mayors during a pandemic really can't do much without the Chair of the Board of Health saying you can. So Maggie, while you're working and a frontline worker, thank you so much for doing the work you're doing and continuing. So thank you.
Could I ask, before you continue, Mayor, could I ask Bree and Amy and Jackie to turn on your cameras and so we can see you? Because we're just really proud of you, and we want to see your faces. Hi, Jackie.
Hey, Jackie.
Hi, guys. Thank you so much. Amy's apparently shy. She's not going to do it. But thank you so much. You guys are doing a great job, and we so appreciate you. And I wanted the city to see you. So that's why I had you put your cameras on. And you guys are doing a great job. Thank you so much for everything you're doing.
I have a suggestion, Madam President.
Yes.
Would all the counselors please unmute and actually applaud right now? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Madam President?
We're good. Yes, Counselor Kuzinski?
May I just add a quick comment? I feel that our city is extremely blessed to have the individuals that are being honored today on board, working hard. I cannot believe how much everyone is working during the pandemic, and I am very grateful for that service. And being someone who has a name that many people have difficulty pronouncing, I would love to know, Bree, how to properly pronounce your name so we can all learn. Would you help us?
It's Ikestat. It's a lot easier than it looks.
Ikestat?
Yes.
Ikestat. I'll make note of that. We'll use flashcards, Mayor, next time. We'll hold up flashcards.
Thank you.
Phonetically spelling it, and yes. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, and now back to you.
Okay. So I think Kara, the Director of the CAC, is still on the call and spoke very eloquently about the work of the Child Advocacy Center. I did take a tour, and it's quite profound as you walk through these rooms that are very comfortable and you just think about the horrors that children are sharing. So the center is just so important. And Kara approached me about a proclamation recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month, and things just aren't being reported. Our statistics are very off. It's very troubling. You see some of that data in the Mayor Pledge Report when in the appendices, when we're looking at police calls and what are involved with domestic violence and child abuse. And they're just incredibly low. And we know that there are kids out. I will say that Kara and I had a great conversation when I went, and I will be approaching the council to assist financially. The CAC, about 25% of their cases are from East Hampton. And there will be a deluge as kids come back to school and they go back to daycare. And I think it's our responsibility to stand with the CAC in children who are in abusive situation and anyone who's being abused. Kara, I hope I did you proud there. And I'd like to read a proclamation recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, secure, and protected from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse, exploitation, and neglect. And whereas, by strengthening families and providing safe, stable, and nurturing environments that are free from violence, abuse, and neglect, opportunities are created for children's growth and success, ensuring a secure future for our communities, where the needs of children are a priority and the needs of family are met. Whereas, preventing child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility that depends on partnerships created among families, social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organization, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas, all citizens should become involved in supporting families and raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment. And now, therefore, I, Nicole LaChappelle, the duly-elected Mayor of the City of East Hampton, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby officially proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of East Hampton. I ask all citizens to increase their participation in efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the community in which we live. Signed, Nicole LaChappelle, Mayor, East Hampton, Massachusetts. I will read this proclamation again on the 9th as the flag is raised, and we have a small ceremony. This really brought to my attention also just the importance of different flags being flown as Kara described to me. You know, if only, you know, one person drives by and asks what that flag is and then helps a kid, then everything's worth it. So thank you for the work of everybody who's in that field. And, you know, every one of us has a responsibility to be looking out for each other, and especially our smallest and most vulnerable. That said, I do also, and I think it's connected very much so to this, I would, as a late addition, and I think it's especially with our Housing, Production, and Needs Report just being finished up, and the story that that told, and also the struggles we're having negotiating and attracting affordable housing developers to our city. I would like to also proclaim April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in East Hampton. Whereas, the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11, 1968, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas, the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmably further fair housing in their communities. And whereas, the City of East Hampton is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas, our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities. And whereas, more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists and many communities remain segregated. And whereas, acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now, there be it resolved that the City of East Hampton does hereby declare the month of April 2021 of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month. The City of East Hampton strives to be an inclusive community, committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equitable housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of East Hampton. Signed, Nicole LaChapelle, Mayor of East Hampton, Massachusetts. We do these proclamations for a whole bunch of different reasons. And I think it's, this one is a little special and different because we've just completed that housing plan and those needs. And I think about the intense conversations we've had about zoning on different committees and here too, that, you know, you got to act if you're going to commit. So I look forward to working with all of you on that. And I hope I have some light news soon around affordable housing and expansion of our housing stock in the near future. The last piece I have is we sent out on April 1st with a press release and put into this packet the finished Mayor's Pledge: Reimagining Police Report. And I submit it to council and to public record on this meeting tonight. I'm not asking, nor does it need a council vote, but I would ask for an action by the council to affirm that it was received into public record.
Would you like us to vote on that, Mayor? Or by moving it to a committee, would that be sufficient affirmation for you?
Moving it to a committee? That would be wonderful.
Okay. I think that's what we're going to do with it, then. All right. Are you all set, Mayor?
I am.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Is she Counselor Rothschild's in?
Counselor Rothschild? Thank you.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say to the press, if they're listening, that I was really surprised that this was submitted and I haven't the Mayor's Pledge and I haven't seen anything in the press covering the Mayor's Pledge Report put out by the City of East Hampton, especially after the recent article to get that published, talking about the call for transparency, talking about the process. And I was just really disappointed that the press seems to be ignoring it. So I hope that changes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. So at this point, we will move into the reports of standing committees. Counselor Rist?
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee will meet next on the 14th to deal with the appropriations that I'm presenting this evening. There are three items for new business. And I'll start with the first one as a first reading. A supplemental appropriation is hereby requested. The amount is $30,078 to be transferred from free cash. $30,078 to be transferred to Computer, Miscellaneous, Professional, and Technical. $30,078 for the following purpose. I am requesting $30,078 from Free Cash Fund to fund the migration of the current city messaging system on premise Outlook Exchange 2016 to Google Workspace for Government. Migrating to Google Workspace aligns with the goals of building a transparent and modern IT infrastructure for the city's government. It lowers costs by reducing the overhead associated with an on-premise server's maintenance and storage. In addition to improving operational effectiveness, Google Workspace for Government provides multiple layers of security protocols, including multiple factor authentication, double encryption, and replication of data. This migration to cloud positions the city in a scalable and elastic space for continued growth. The next item I am going to read as a first reading comes from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $71,200 to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Historic Preservation. $71,200 to be appropriated to the Emily Williston Library Ventilation System. $71,200 for the following purpose: For the purpose and installation of fresh air ventilation system to comply with COVID-19 reopening requirements. I move that these two appropriations be sent to the Finance Committee and also that a public hearing for these two appropriations be set for April 21st, our next meeting.
Second?
Motion second to move the two supplemental appropriations, one for the Google Workspace, one for library ventilation, be moved to the Finance Committee and to set a public hearing for both on 4/21. Any further discussion? Barbara. Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next item is a request that I have made specifically for the Finance Committee to review grants that we have received from the federal and state government for COVID-19. I'm going to read what I have put into the packet for the public. First, as a preamble, this request for monthly reports on COVID-19 grant funding and spending as an ongoing Finance Committee agenda item does not imply or suggest that there is any behind-the-scenes misuse of these funds by the city under the mayor or the school department. On the contrary, my request only serves to highlight how these funds have helped our city and schools during this pandemic. These reports will also inform the council when the budget for fiscal year '22 is discussed regarding ongoing fiscal priorities for the city and the schools. I will read the request specifically. I am requesting that the City Council, through its Finance Committee, establish a monthly report agenda item that requests that the city and the school department report on the funds received related to COVID-19 federal and state grants. These reports must be in spreadsheet detail, listing what has been received and how funds were spent from COVID grant amounts, including but not limited to CARES Act funding, FEMA, ESER, and American Rescue Act funding. Spreadsheet details should list the following, as well as other details as requested by the committee: What has been received, when, and what the funds are targeted to, if any? Expenditure by line item with purposes detailed? Submitted reimbursement by date? Any changes in spending and why? Reimbursement denials and why? The purpose of this request is to make sure the city and the school department are transparent in how these funds have been and will be used. The City Council does not have appropriation authority for these funds, and they may be used as they are received. As such, allowing councilors and the public to be made aware of funding sources and how these funds were spent puts transparency in full focus. The Finance Committee will transmit to the full council any information it receives. As a side note, the mayor has already agreed that this transparency is welcome and necessary. This agenda item will be ongoing until which time, as all funds have been spent, I expect these funds will be used over a few fiscal years. I would appreciate the council's consideration. In a motion, I ask that the City Council approve the request for monthly reports on COVID-19 grant funding and spending as an ongoing Finance Committee agenda item.
Second?
Motion second to approve the addition of the agenda item for monthly reports on COVID-19 grant funding and spending to the Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara. Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, President. Just to conclude, I will be asking the city to provide information on the April 28 Finance Committee meeting. And then I will request the schools to provide information for this item in our first meeting in May. I will be sending out that request specifically by email. That concludes Finance, Madam President.
Thank you. Public Safety, Counselor Gomez, I think we're going to be adding something to your very limited agenda right now.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, and in front of a motion, I want to move the Mayor's Pledge Work Group final report to the Public Safety Committee.
Second?
Motion second to move the Mayor's Pledge Work Group report to the Public Safety Committee. Any further discussion? I have just one comment to make, that the purpose for moving this is to create public meetings and public facing and review of this document over the course of a few meetings. I don't expect that this will just be one meeting. I think Counselor Gomez and I have talked about it, that it will be multiple meetings, full transparency to the public, feedback from the public, ongoing and within the Public Safety Committee. Coming out of that committee will then be a presentation to the full council on what they've learned over the course of those meetings. So thank you very much, Counselor Gomez. Barbara? Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes.
We don't have a date yet for the meeting, but I will be contacting Counselor Derby and Counselor Rothschild tonight to schedule the meeting as soon as possible so that way we can start working on this. And that concludes.
Thank you very much. Appointments, Counselor Rothschild?
Excuse me. Okay, there you go. Let me pull up. So we met and I would like to, we met with Amy Tefter and Stan Diamond. We didn't meet with Amy. Tefter responded to our questions over email and Stan Diamond attended our meeting. We're lucky, I think, to have both of them joining our city committees. Stan Diamond, as most of you know Stan Diamond, he has served on the Senior Workoff Committee and the Telecom Committee, East Hampton Media Board. And he just wants to continue to serve the city as those other two committees' work is pretty much wrapping up. And since he said he is an aging person, he thinks he has a good perspective for the council on aging, and he just wanted to find a different capacity with which to serve the city. So I thought that was pretty exciting. Amy Tefter is a conservation, let me get her, hold on one second. Sorry. So Amy Tefter is a conservation scientist and she's looking to join our Conservation Committee because she wants to be involved in the community and she has expertise in, let me see. She has expertise in conservation and citizen science and engagement. And right now, she is in a fellowship that's focused on leadership and training to better facilitate conversations relevant to conservation issues, expand diversity and inclusivity in decision-making, and apply information in real-life context, including policy reform and citizen science and engagement. So like, wow. So very excited that she's stepping up to join the Conservation Commission. We unanimously voted to recommend both of their confirmations and that of Emily Russo, who's been serving as the Personnel Director, to continue that. So I move to confirm the following three mayoral appointments: Amy Tefter to the Conservation Commission with a term expiration 12/31/2023; Stan Diamond to the Council on Aging with a term expiration 12/31/2022; and Emily Russo as Personnel Director with a term expiration 12/31/2023.
Second to each?
Motion is second to approve three mayoral appointments. Any further discussion? Barbara? Peg Coniff?
I had a statement.
Sorry.
You missed my hand.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Rist.
I just wanted to put a plug in for Emily Russo. I have worked with her on appointments this year, mainly the Assessor. And she is the kind of new person in Human Resources. She moved up quickly into the role and has done a fantastic job, considering she was thrown into the deep end of the water immediately. And I am very appreciative of her. And I'm thankful the mayor has decided to make her a permanent director. Thank you very much.
I just would like to add my two cents. I see it the same way, Dan. We are totally in agreement. Emily, thank you for being there.
Agreed.
Barbara? Peg Coniff?
Absolutely, yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Rothschild?
Aye.
Dan Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I also move to move the following two mayoral appointments to the Appointment Committee: Kat DeSilva to the Commission on Disability with a term expiration 12/31/2022; and Scott Redmond to the Board of Assessors with a term expiration 12/31/2022.
Second?
Motion second to move two mayoral appointments to the Appointment Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara? Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. We also made a good headway on our agenda item, on the process and the rule provisions. So we voted on a revised rule recommendation, which I will be sending to the full council for our next meeting, for our next agenda packet. And also, just, I think I mentioned this last time, we're going to be inviting chairs of committees and boards to our full council on a regular basis to tell us about their work. And we'll be using some of that video footage to create PSAs for the community. And Counselor Flood is currently working on scheduling with a couple different committee chairs. And our next meeting is Thursday, April 15th at 2:00 p.m.
I love the times of your meetings.
I'm done with the 6 o'clock meeting. So luckily, my two co-committee members are amenable to afternoon.
Is that all?
There we go. That concludes.
All right. Thank you very much. Ordinance, Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind people that we have a joint public hearing with the Planning Board next Tuesday, the 13th, 6:15. And we're going to be discussing two things: canvas delivery, as well as the solar amendments that we have brought forward, which, in that same vein, I guess I would like to ask for an extension on the solar item. And I'm thinking 60 days would be good, and I would do that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Motion second to extend the agenda item solar installation 60 days. Any discussion? Barbara? Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye. Yeah. Also, I just want to mention the fact that we have been working on the Affordable Housing ordinance pieces. So, you know, and I think, to be completely frank, we're pretty close. So, you know, we're going to be having another joint public hearing with the Planning Board that has not been set yet with those. But, you know, I think we're getting ready to kind of move on to the next step. So we'll just keep everybody apprised as we move forward with that. And that concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Derby. Did you, I'm sorry, Counselor Derby, did you, other than the joint public hearing on Tuesday, does the Ordinance Committee itself have any meetings coming up? TBD?
We do, but I don't have the exact date on that, so I'm just going to have to get back on that one.
Okay. Thank you. Property Counselor Zaret, I assume there's nothing there?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Rules and government relations, Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Madam President. We've been busy over the last couple of weeks, and we actually have two things ready to vote on tonight. Madam President, is it okay if I share my screen just to show the language?
Let me make you a co-host.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
So the first thing that we have, I hope I have this up. Yeah, I do. Cool. Is, this is our current language. This is a report. Council Rist was very helpful in writing the draft of this, and we went over it. This is for the committee in emails. Work that Councilor Flood had submitted to us. And this is, so I'll just, or Dan, do you want to read this, or should I read it, or?
You've heard enough of me, Tom.
All right, cool, I'll do it. All right, so, the member, the Rules and Government Relations Committee has voted to request that the mayor initiate the process of supplying email addresses for various city boards and committees. The following are the details. Each email with a city address will automatically be sent to the private emails of boards and committee members. The member replies will be routed to the person asking through the city email system. This will guarantee that volunteer committee members will not have their private emails addresses published. This is a concern, because unlike elected officials, board and committee members are volunteers and would not want to be bombarded with emails of their private addresses. The cost of, the cost should be about $12 per email address per month with, and with around 31 boards or committees. That amounts to $4,464 a year, provided the number of committees stays the same, for these addresses on top of what the city pays for all email addresses. Dr. Karen Kemhor, our new Systems Administrator, indicated that the city will be moving to Google Cloud Services, which we just discussed, and, you know, so that finance item, which is much more secure and will allow this type of grouping and routing while our current Microsoft system does not. Dr. Kemhor will try to pilot the system with a city border committee, e.g., the Planning Board. Once the transition, once we transition to Google, the committee requests that we be able to observe this test. These new committee addresses will appear next to the committee names on the website, and will greatly improve citizen access to committees or boards to ask questions or state opinions. As this adds a new layer of transparency and communication, it is not very costly. The Rules and Government Relations Committee strongly recommends that the city council recommend this system to the mayor. So, does anyone have any question before I make a motion, or?
Council Rist?
Just a comment, and it looks like, given the appropriation this evening, that the cost is less than $12 per email. I'm not sure if that's what I read this evening is correct, but it may be a lot less, and therefore, the amount that this costs will be less per year. Just to put that out there. Pardon me?
Even better.
Yes.
Madam President? Yes. I would just, and maybe Council Peak did this, as far as the redirection to personal email, do we have an opinion from the AG that the personal emails will or will not be subject to FOIA?
I don't believe that we reviewed that aspect of it.
I would just, I'm not, not in support of this at all, but, but I do think we need to know that and let folks who are serving know that they could be voided.
So, the expectation of an email from a board and committee is that it is subject to FOIA. Your question is, because we're kind of putting the personal email in the background, does that then open the door for all of their personal? I see what you're saying, okay. And would you like the committee to reach out to the lawyers for that, or do you want to do that within your purview of approving this?
I can do it. I mean, I, yeah, I'm fine doing it. I just wanted it to come up, and it just kind of popped in my, in my head. And as to the cost we're negotiating, we thought it was $12, and another approved vendor came forward with a competitive bid. So, Dr. Kemhor is reviewing those kind of for an apples-to-apples. So, we feel strongly that 12 will be the upper limit. The last thing I would just include in this, which will help on some level, is we will migrate away from Zoom and use Google products at no additional cost on top of that user cost.
Do I have to do training on the new thing, or can I fade into the back? I'm kidding, go ahead.
You are now, that, I, Madam President?
I can only learn one system at a time.
It's not for me to direct you on how you use your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So, I, so really, what the council is doing this evening is to essentially recommend that this process, whether the specifics of it are related to Google or something, some other competitive bid from a different vendor, I think the concept is really more what we're encouraging the mayor and the city to do, which is to switch from the current to a new process that would allow boards and committees to email and exchange emails with the public. Is that a fair assessment, Council Peak?
Yes.
Okay.
And, I see, Council says it's a hint.
Yeah, I can't see well, so, Council Rist, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that that was an important thing we didn't discuss, that the mayor brought up about the AG and FOIA. It will affect our boards and committees, most of whom are appointed by the mayor. So, whatever information she can get from the AG regarding that, it's important to know, because we want the city residents to be more involved with our boards and committees, and to be able to ask questions, which is the purpose of this. So, I think this information the mayor will get from the AG will help her inform those committees. If they volunteer to be on a committee, they may be asked to have their emails published.
Well, I, my comment, my comment to that, Council Rist, would be, if the AG replies in the affirmative that this opens the door to private emails, I think we need to go back to the drawing board. I would not want to move forward with that being a potential issue, because that kind of negates what we're trying to do here, actually.
Well, I, I don't disagree, but I think the mayor is the one who has to initiate this. And she obviously, if she doesn't want to do it, then it's a dead issue.
No, I agree, I agree. Council Rothschild?
I'm sorry if this is already said, but why are the emails being forwarded to the personal email? Why can't they just have a city email?
Because, it's not that they're being forwarded, they're being, I don't know the technical.
Is it just an alias? Is it just an alias?
Yes.
The idea, sorry.
Go ahead, Tom.
The idea would be that, like, and there's other cities that do this, where you'd have, like, planningboard@easthamptonma.gov. And so, you can send something there, and it would get rerouted to everybody's email addresses, so that we're buying one email address rather than a bunch. So, that, that's a way, and it also, that's just a thing that a lot of people, a lot of other cities, we'd seen, had handled it that way. And cost-effective and pretty easy to update as members cycle on and off the boards.
I hear that, that makes sense. I mean, if it is that there, whatever email is being forwarded to is, you know, susceptible to FOIA, I would just think of the best practice that they would create a new email that they just use for city business, you know, that's what I would recommend, but.
And they totally could, yeah. One thing I just want to say real quick is, I got confused here with the other transparency thing that was submitted by Council Flood. This was something that was initially moved forward by Councilors Zaret and former Councilor Lynch. So, I stand corrected.
Okay.
If there's anything else, I can make a motion.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
All right. That the East Hampton City Council recommend to the mayor that she provide a city email address for each committee and board now operating in the city.
Second.
Motion is second that the city council is recommending to the mayor a new email structure for boards and committees. Any further discussion? Council Kozinski?
Maybe I missed something, and I apologize for that. Maybe somebody could just let me know why we don't set this up within our own email system. I thought when we were talking about setting up emails, then we would have an easthamptonma.gov, since this is part of the East Hampton City Government, that the Planning Board would have its, East Hampton, a Planning Board at easthamptonma.gov. Maybe I missed that, and there wouldn't be any additional expense, assuming that our personal emails for the city councilors and for all the employees don't carry additional expenses. So, anybody shed some light on that?
I was just going to say, I'm not, we're not suggesting that every person on every board and committee get their own email address, because that would be an administrative nightmare with the amount of people that change. What we're suggesting is that we have a single email address for each committee. Within that email address, not unlike our city council distribution list, if you want to call it, where if you type in an email and you write "City Council," it's going to go to all nine of us. It's the same concept. You type in "Planning Board," it's going to go to everybody on the Planning Board, but they can use their own, it's going to their email addresses. And they can respond, and it will look like, correct me if I'm wrong, Council Peak, when they respond, it will look like they're responding as the Planning Board, is that right? Or is, are they?
That, that's what the Systems Administrator indicated would be possible, yes.
Okay. Council Rothschild?
I just want to help Dave Peak, because I don't know if I answered the question, that it is in the same email system that we have now, and the whole city might be migrating to Google. So, that's why, it's not just their email, all of our email will be Google, but it will still be easthamptonma.gov or whatever. And we, there is a pay, there is a fee per email, you know, with our different services. So, it's exactly the same as our emails, but in terms of sending it from their email, they would have to set up an alias. They'd have to set up that within their email, if possible, but just stick it with the POP server or whatnot, but anyway.
Does that help, Council Kozinski?
It helps me to understand that we're setting up a new system, and that everybody is going to get an email, like, to the Planning Board, and then all Planning Board members will have that email, that's great. And it's going to cost the city about $5,000 a year to do this, I get that. In terms of responding, let's say, a Planning Board member responds, or someone else responds, it's my understanding that a true response from the Planning Board really would come from the agent Jeff Bag, the city planner, or from a board vote or decision. And I'm not just sure how that kind of mechanism will work out if everybody starts responding as every board member talks to somebody in the community. And maybe this has all been figured out by smarter people than I am, but I just worry about some confusion there.
I think that that's something that the boards are going to have to figure out. And once we have a sense of like how, like, it might be different for different depending on the nature of their work and sort of the nature of their correspondence, I could certainly foresee a board saying, "Don't reply to people." Like, just take that information and don't get back to them. But like, it's just a way that if you're, you know, somebody who can't make a meeting, and you want to send your opinion to the Planning Board, then send it, and the plan, and they could be instructed to not reply. Or you could potentially have a different board, like the, I mean, maybe the Man-Hand Rail Trail Committee. It's just, it's not the same sort of stakes, and if there's somebody asking for information, they, maybe they say that there's one person who's responding, or maybe they say that anyone can, you know. I think that how those boards communicate, there's a lot of context involved. And there's certainly things that still need to get figured out on the technical side, but I do think that it's time to get the ball rolling on it.
And I think, I think it really is, if we look at it as an enabler of transparency and communication for the boards, it could be, Council Kozinski, that the Planning Board, we keep using that as an example, but the Planning Board may, behind the scenes, only put one email address attached to that email and not give it to everybody on the board. I mean, how they set it up, this is just creating flexibility and more enablement for each committee to use email in a much more efficient way or to not use it at all. But what we're saying is, we're now creating a system that allows the public to engage with committees in a much easier way than trying to figure out, you know, who Sue Smith's email is, and I need to reach out to her. Well, just send it to the Planning Board, she'll get it.
I would say that I'm very much in favor of having an easy way for the public to communicate with everybody who represents the city. I just would like to hope that everyone gives due consideration to open meeting law in any discussions about anything that comes in. I know we are very well-schooled for the most part in that, but every board should keep that in mind as we move forward.
Council Rothschild?
I just want to make another point, as being on the Appointment Committee, it would be very helpful to have an email like this to communicate with the different committees and boards. I know Barb is constantly updating, like, a list of everybody all the time, and, and, you know, sometimes we don't have contact information. So, not only for the public, but just for inner workings, it's very welcome.
And our city clerk would like to make a?
Sure, so, I guess I can kind of make an example. Right now, for the Man-Hand Rail Trail, we have a website, and we have an email address. It's info@eastmanhannrailtrail.org. And if anybody writes to that email address, it comes to myself and one other member. And we're the only people on the committee, but it's just kind of a generic address. And we're the only two people that respond to it. So, I can see it being something similar to that. You might designate, you don't want everybody on the committee responding. You might just pick one or two people to answer on behalf of that board.
Any other questions? Council Rist?
I just want to comment that one of the best things about this is that people who don't go to meetings are able to write an opinion that'll get to every member of a board when they're making a vote, like the Planning Board, that has major decisions. And that opinion is often sent to Jeff Bag or one of the chair, whereas now, everybody gets it. And I think that's very important to allow more city residents to get involved and to have a way to do it. But the other thing is, this is going to be up to the mayor to look at all of the legal implications and the cost, and to decide. We are only recommending that the mayor do this. The Rules Committee is recommending that the council recommends. So, it's up to the mayor, and I know she's very good at getting into the details of these things. So, thank you very much.
Council, oh, Council Zaret?
Just a quick thank you to the Rules Committee. This was, I'm glad with the way, the direction this went after it was initially submitted. As you know, we had some questions of initial barriers when we thought there was a cost issue, and I really appreciate you all sticking with this and continuing to move forward and find creative ways to make it work, and I'm very happy with the final product, so thank you.
Did, Council Peak, did you have a motion and a second on the floor?
Yes.
Yes, there's a motion and a second.
If we're all done discussing, yes? Okay, Barbara?
Okay.
Before we start, Tom, I need to have that memo, so make sure you email it to me.
I thought I already did, but if not, I will do it right now.
You did not.
Okay.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and I have a second thing. The language of which was recorded in Council Coniff's excellent minutes, so I'm going to share those minutes. This is for the Rule 5C Amendment that Council Zaret had brought forward. There had been some back and forth about how we wanted to approach this, and this is really about, you know, what amount of information we should give when we introduce new items. And the general thought that it would be nice to have new items, and the general thought that it would be nice to have a little bit of a verbal introduction to new business without it turning into a big deliberative event. So, this is the language, so, yes, the new 5C language that we're proposing reads, "Any such measure must be introduced verbally by way of a motion to refer to committee and shall include a synopsis of the new business to be introduced, and no motion to refer to committee shall be accepted without such introduction. No debate may occur on the merits of the item being introduced." So that is the language that we landed on, that everyone was happy with, so at this time, I would make a motion to approve this amendment to City Council Rule 5C.
Second?
Motion is second, any discussion, Counselor Rist?
Just wanna make it clear that this is a, this doesn't change the entire rule, this is added to 5C, just to be clear, Tom, correct?
Yes, yeah, it's added on to the?
It's added to the end of that, that particular rule deals with how measures are introduced, dealing with, you know, that they have to have a lot of information for the council, et cetera, so, and this is how they can be introduced. And one of the main reasons we wanted to do this was because the public doesn't always get to see our packet, and that way, when somebody's introducing a new measure, a verbal synopsis would be valuable to the public at the time it's being sent to committee. But it's very important that we don't debate the measure, we're only debating whether to send it to committee, and there's occasions, very rare, where we may not want to send it to committee, that happened one time, but it's important that the public know why we're doing things.
And just to give a sense, like, this is basically how we already handle finance items, because state law requires it, but other things, there's, it's often, like, I think we'll be like, "And I'll make a motion to move the proposal on whatever to committee," and we just vote on it without anyone, like, introducing the thing, so, but already, just for a sense of what this looks like, you know, we, this is what we already do for finance, where Counselor Rist will read out, you know, "The motion's being made to talk, to do this, and this is what we're doing, and this is why," and then we do it. So it's really just that, but we're just expanding that to everything, is, that's what we're proposing, anyway.
Right, and also, as a point of clarification, when the motion is made to move to committee, and we open that motion up to discussion, it's important to remember that all we're opening up is the question to move it to a committee, that by, by me asking, "Is there any further discussion?" We have to remember that the discussion can only be pertinent to the motion on the floor, not on the topic that is being moved, just that something is being moved. You can disagree, you can say it should go to a different committee, but you can't talk about the merits of the item, and really, we're trying to just really be very clear about how we introduce business and what we mean when we say any further discussion on the introduction of the business, and, because we shouldn't be talking about it without the public having fair warning and the ability to participate in the discussion. Counselor Rothschild.
My concern is in the introduction, if people start speaking to the merits of something and it becomes kind of a debate, should we say, like, if some things we propose are a little controversial and the person proposing it, I don't know, it just seems like, I don't know if there should be a time limit, or they, or maybe you should pre-write and submit to the council how you're gonna introduce it, so whatever written introduction you do, you just read that? I just worry about, you know, just kind of spontaneous monologues on introducing things that start speaking to the merits of it.
Right, and that's, that, I won't say that that's not disallowed, that's like a double negative, but when someone is putting a motion on the floor, they kind of have a right to say why, like, they're doing it because they want this thing to move forward, or they want this to be a topic that we discuss. I completely agree with you that we do need to put parameters around whether it's a four-hour soliloquy that ends with, "And I make a motion to do what I just said." We really do have to keep it, you know, personally, I like the format of the finance one, where it's, "This is what I'm doing, this is what's happening, and this is why," and then that you're done. I don't want to create parameters that are so structured and rigid for the city council. I think this, this is really an attempt for us to say, kind of to Counselor Peak's point, when we are introducing business, we owe it to the public to explain to them what we're doing and why we're doing it. And I agree, and, you know, and I guess it'll be up to the president to control the time limit, we already have a rule that says that councilors are limited to three minutes, but that can be changed, and I think maybe it's just time that we adhere to that. Counselor Rist?
I just wanted to comment on that very subject. Our rules are designed to guide the president of the council or the chairs of our committees, and this rule is establishing what President Coniff has done, to cut off debate on a measure that's being presented, rather than the motion which is to send it to committee. This gives the president that authority by rule to make sure that debate on the measure itself, or the, the issues that the measure is presenting, are being debated that evening, and, and it can't be, it should be just, "We're sending it to, to a committee, and do you agree that this is something the council should discuss?" And it's a difficult thing, in a certain way, but I think the president has to have some enforcement language in the rules to make sure that we don't wander off into debate that hasn't been placed properly on our agenda, so the public can respond to it. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Rist? Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm a little bit struggling with this new rule, first because I think the process that we have at the council provide the, to cover what this rule is proposing. I think we already have it in, in our process. I do agree, the, the public should know while we're moving some issues to any other committee, but, but again, we have a rule that we put in place probably like a year ago, or two years ago, about every time that someone is gonna introduce something, present them with a cover letter, and usually that cover letter is the introduction of, of the new, of new business. Again, I do agree with Counselor Rothschild, and I do know that the person of the council have the ability to cut the, the council who's gonna extend and the explanation of the new business, but I kinda worry of that, too. So if someone tried to use the plat, this platform just to be on the spot all the time, just because they wanna use it for campaigning or something like that, and I kinda worry about that. That's why I think the, the process that we, that we have, and the council provided, and that's from kind of struggling with the rule.
So, are you, is this, this amendment, which is really just an additional couple of sentences to the existing rule, I, I agree with you that I think we have certain structure within our rules on introducing business. I also think that any opportunities for us to be extremely obvious about what we mean, especially and in particular, as, as we may or may not get new councilors, you know, each election year, I think it's important for us to, some of us have the historical knowledge, but for us to continue to, to work on these rules so that anyone coming new to the council, there's not ambiguity, it's very clear, and this is just another layer of clarity, but I don't know that we're changing anything, per se, we're just being really obvious about what we mean. And, and you're right, we did say that you should have an introductory letter, and in some cases, though, I think part of it is how we make the motion to introduce that. Sometimes it's very simplistic and not as descriptive as it could be, and I think we just need to make the conscious effort to be really clear that the motions we're making are also for the public to understand what we're doing and how we're conducting our business. So this is a very intentional change, really for all of us to rethink how we introduce the business to the public and to our agenda, so that we're really clear, and they can go, "Oh, I totally get what that is, I'm going to that committee meeting." We, we move really fast here, and, and the more we can do to give the public a sense of what we're doing, the better, but I, I hear you, and if you think, you know, certainly with your vote, you can kind of tell us which way you wanna go with this. Any other discussion? Counselor Derby?
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear all that, and I think that's fine, and I think this is fine, I, it just does concern me that we're, we're putting in something that is blatantly discriminatory to someone who might not be able to verbalize at that moment, and, and so I think that that needs to be considered, you know, 'cause what if someone gets on the council that has a difficult times, you know, and I know that that's kind of part of the, the territory, but, like, to me, this just kind of stands out as, if someone is, is going to be a counselor and they have a difficult time verbalizing, and the way that they communicate is through written communication, this is discriminatory, and so, you know?
Tell me more about that, Counselor Derby.
Well, what, you know, what happens if I find out I have some sort of polyp in my throat and I have to get it surgically removed and I can't speak? This means I couldn't introduce new business, this rule, means I would not?
Oh, I see what you're saying, verbally.
It says it must be verbally introduced by, so, I'm just, you know, I, I know that's kind of nitpicky and whatever, it's just building in discrimination into the rule, so.
I think that's a great catch, and I would be willing to strike that word, and either put, you know, verbally or in written, in, in writing, the motion, you know, that is intended. Maybe when they introduce it into the packet, the motion is already written on the piece of paper, that's a very good, a good point, actually.
That was my only issue, so.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Rist?
I just wanna say, Counselor Derby, that's, that's important, but in that instance, a counselor can get a co-sponsor to read the, whatever the measure is.
Yeah.
Again, we're just trying to make sure that the public hears what we're doing, not just reads it, because a lot of us get these packets, and the public comes to a meeting and they haven't read the packet, it's just another help to communicate. So I'm hoping that particular instance that you brought up is rare and can be worked around by getting someone else to read if you have an issue with verbalizing, but again, I'm just trying to, I voted for this because I wanted to be able to allow the residents another way of learning what we're doing.
I have a couple things. In, in terms of that, that issue, I mean, I think it's just worth also remembering that our rules are, you know, can always be overwritten. I think that if there was a case where we had a colleague who, for whatever reason, was not able to either temporarily for, or for an extended period of time verbally introduce something, we could easily find an accommodation for them, you know? I mean, I, I, that's just, that is, like, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the value of that, but I also just think that, you know, if that were to come up and someone were to have a valid reason why they weren't able to comply with this rule, we could find some easy workaround, and I just, I don't think that, I don't think that any of us would be like, "Well, sorry, I guess you just can't introduce any new business." In terms of, you know, sort of, you know, what Counselor Gomez had said about, you know, us already having a process, you know, when this whole thing came to committee, one of the things that sort of struck me was actually that there was definitely a gap between members of the council in terms of their understanding about what level of presentation is appropriate or even allowed under open meeting law, and so I do think that, given that, there is some value in, in clarifying our process further, given that, like, if people who have served on the council for multiple years didn't all agree on exactly what the appropriate way to do this currently is, that I, I just felt like, maybe there's, there's room for a conversation about that. That's all.
Counselor Zerrit?
Thanks, President Coniff. I think there's some reasonable points made here, I think that, look, this is a transparency tool, and I think that there's been, just, some of these meetings get really fast-paced, and I think, as many people have already said, and I'll just reiterate, and that was the impetus for this, is that members of the public come to our meetings and they have either A, read the packet and understand it, they've B, read the packet and misunderstand it, which is really problematic, or haven't read the packet at all, and they're attending our meetings, they're watching our meetings, and it, this gives them an opportunity to understand exactly what is being moved to a committee, if they wanna attend that committee meeting, to offer that level of transparency, and to potentially clarify any misunderstandings that the public have, because we all know what happens when people read the packet and they think that they hear something, and it's not the intention of the measure. Parliamentary rules, our rules can be suspended, so in case someone either can't temporarily speak or completely lacks the ability to verbalize something for a variety of reasons, they can ask to suspend this rule, and additionally so, if someone is going over their limit or, or taking advantage of the parliamentary view process, any one of the members of the city council can either call them out of order, or the president could call them out of order. So it's very important to me, 'cause I keep watching this, we have very lengthy measures that are introduced in the packet, we just had this really important housing issue, for instance, submitted by Counselor Peak, and that's a fairly complicated, a fairly complicated piece of legislation right there. So for instance, for him to introduce that and essentially bullet list what this is accomplishing for our public, I think that's invaluable, and there's a variety of mitigation processes around how to deal with the concerns that were brought up, and as with the email thing, I think anything we could do to create more transparency in our process is important, and as Counselor Rist said, these things, they're, they're, they're framework, they're not, they're not dogmatic, it doesn't make you do anything, it recommend, it, it gives you recommendations how things should be done. Frankly, you could choose not to do it, and someone would have to call you on violating the rule, I mean, we probably break city council rules all the time. So this is just a piece so that people know what's happening, especially the public whose we have a duty to serve, and that's all.
Thank you. Counselor Kuzinski?
I appreciate all the councilors' comments thus far, very important. I wonder if the rule suggestion might even be shortened, and I'll make a suggestion in a bit, but are all measure, is, is a resolution a measure?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
So no resolution could be introduced without the synopses and requiring it to be moved to committee?
Yeah.
According to this rule?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
No, no.
Since, I believe it reads, "Any such measure must be introduced by way of a verbal motion to refer to committee."
If you are, may I answer, Madam President?
Please.
The charter requires measures to be sent to committee unless they are going to be introduced in one motion at one meeting, and unless a counselor objects, they can be dealt with in one meeting. So this is, this is dealing with measures that will be sent to committee only. Some measures, we have done donation accounts, the resolution this evening, all of those measures, if a single counselor objects, they have to be sent to committee, but they can be dealt with in one meeting. This particular rule simply makes it more transparent to the public what the measure being introduced, resolution and ordinance, a appropriation, whatever we're doing, is going, that's the purpose of. whatever we're doing, is going, that's the purpose of this. And it doesn't have to be a long synopsis, but it is important that the public knows, if we communicate to the public three ways, and the third time they, they read it, then they hear it, and they finally understand it, that's a help. It's all about communication. So just to be clear, this measure, any measure that's brought to the, brought to the council, has to be sent to committee, unless it's being asked to be dealt with in one, in, at one time.
Just didn't want to, want to be sure we didn't trip ourselves up here with, with requiring something different. Would it be appropriate to mention something like, all measures must be made by way of a motion, and shall include a synopsis of the new business? Would that be simpler?
I personally think the debate language is important for the president, so that we don't debate the measure itself.
And then add, add, add the final sentence, and then, just would seem a little less cumbersome. It seems cumbersome to me, for some reason. I'll reread it. "All measures must be made by way of a motion, and shall include a synopsis of the new business. No debate may occur on the merits of the item being introduced." I would submit that as a motion, if there was any support for that.
Well, Madam President, point of order, we have a motion on the floor.
That's an amendment.
Right. Okay, so, so you're suggesting, Counselor Kozinski, that we change the wording of the first sentence to what you just spoke, the entire first sentence, including the last clause of, "And no motion to refer to committee shall be accepted without such introduction", all of that be stricken in lieu of the wording you just gave, and then continue with, "No debate may occur on the merits of the item being introduced." Is that correct?
I, I would be happy to introduce that as an amendment, should there, it seemed to make sense to the group.
Well, whether it does or not, you can still submit it as an amendment. And then we'll just see if anyone seconds that amendment motion.
Sure. I will suggest an amendment to the proposed Rules 5C, replacing the first sentence with, "All measures shall be, must be made by way of a motion, and shall include a synopsis of the new business. No debate may occur on the merits of the item being introduced." That's the motion at my, just if I may give support for it, I think it leaves out there being any words like verbal, and any questions about discrimination.
Second.
Second. Motion in a second, on the amendment, as, as Counselor Kozinski has put forward. Barbara, any further discussion? Barbara?
No, I have my hand up, Madam President.
I can't see you. Can you, can you stop share, excuse me, can you stop sharing, Counselor Peak? Thank you. I can't see everybody. Counselor Rist?
The word verbal was the primary reason for the, the rule, in that we want the public to hear the synopsis. If all we have to do is do a written synopsis, that's where we are right now, so the whole change isn't necessary, except for the debate language. So, just want to remind, the reason we, we wanted the verbal synopsis is so that, like I read the Finance Committee appropriations, that's quite clear to the public what's going on. And I have to read it that evening. I disagree with the notion that it's discriminatory. I think that can be worked around, if there is ever an issue like that. And in my 25 years on the council, that's never been an issue. However, it could happen, but I think there's a workaround. But the whole point of this rule change is for the measure to be verbally introduced, like we've introduced a lot of things. So I strongly disagree with amending this, this language. We debated this for a long time, with Counselors Errett and all the members of the committee, so it has been discussed.
Any other? Okay, Barbara?
Okay, before we vote, JP, no matter which way this goes, you need to send that to me in writing, because I did not get it.
I shall send it to you in writing.
Okay.
Point of clarification?
Counselor Errett?
Are we voting on the amendment?
Amendment.
Okay.
Okay. Salem Derby?
No.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
No.
Dan Rist?
No.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
No.
Peg Coniff?
No.
One, two.
Motion fails five to four.
Wow.
We have a, we have a main motion that is the entirety of what Counselor Peak presented, and we will now, any further discussion on that? Barbara?
Erica Flood?
Obstain.
Omar Gomez?
No.
JP Kozinski?
No.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Obstain.
Oh, boy. Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
No.
Motion passes four to three.
Madam President, point of order.
You need five.
It does not pass by rule of-
I thought, I, hang on, I just have a question. If two people abstain, those are not votes, right?
It doesn't matter. The charter requires five votes of the council for the measure to pass.
All right, then it fails. So we're back to the drawing board, and we keep the, the, the rule as it is.
All right. Well, on the remainder of our agenda, we are going to, I'm, I'm going to need a 30-day extension, I believe, on the other two items, but I think I can, I think we can address them in that time. So at this time, I'd like to request a 30-day extension for the resolution proposal for a payment in lieu of taxes pilot program, as well as for adding a council rule requiring anti-bias training.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Motion in a second to extend two agenda items 30 days for rules in government relations. Any further discussion?
Barbara? Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Motion- That concludes, thank you. So, a quick update on some of the ad hoc comments, Counselor Peak, is there any, I think we were going to reschedule, was this the committee note, or was it telecom? That we need to reschedule Paul St Pierre to do a presentation?
Yeah, we're hoping to do that at the next meeting, I believe, that's-
And that's telecom, right?
Right. Yeah, yeah, that's telecom. For ranked choice voting, I have more to say about this, but we did have the vendor come in to the city, and we ran a bunch of ballots through it, and tested the tabulator, and everything worked. So there's a couple little technical points of just like how the workflow is going to work, and how that lines up with the ordinance that we're going to discuss at our next meeting, but overall, I felt really positive walking away from there.
Great.
One, I, can I make one other point? One other thing that actually came up in my head afterwards is this, this new democracy suite that we paid the $8,000 from, it, it really makes, it's very quick, and it makes wonderful reports. And the good thing is, I could use that for any election. It doesn't, it isn't limited only to ranked choice voting, it is something that I could use to input my results, and upload really quickly for nice reports for all elections.
Oh, it's awesome.
Which is a really great thing.
That's great.
Yep.
Nice. Anything else on that, Counselor Peak? Okay. Counselor Kozinski, do you have anything to report on senior tax workoff?
Yes, there will be a meeting of the Senior Tax Workoff Committee on Thursday, April 15th, at 6:00 PM, to meet with the East Hampton Council on Aging Board members, and to work out some of the details of the senior tax workoff program. So that'll be 6:00 PM next Thursday, the 15th.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Rothschild, Ordinance Review Committee and City Auditor Candidate Selection Committee.
The Ordinance Review Committee, we were hoping to present tonight, but I didn't do a close read of the agenda, so I guess it didn't get, so it's not true or not. So, we will be presenting hopefully the next meeting, Monday, the next meeting, which is the 21st. Yes. And I will make sure that it's in the packet when I read the packet. So I'm not going to say too much, because you're going to get a, and I already sent you our draft report, so there you go. We, our next meeting, though, will be Monday, April 19th, at 6:00 PM. The Auditor Selection Committee, we met on March 18th, we went into executive session due to insufficient field of candidates, however, the search was reopened, and has again closed. So we are currently in executive session, and that's where we are.
Fair enough. We haven't scheduled any, I mean, you can't have a meeting unless you open it.
We, we have an ongoing, we opened a public meeting two weeks ago, and we have had subsequent execu, ongoing, continued executive meetings from there. Is that cool? Okay, it's all related until we get to a decision.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's old business and new business, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Barbara?
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Right, meeting is over. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Good night, everybody.